This time we'll call the Tuesday, November eighth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors to order. Larry McDevitt, Mike Steinis and myself, Jack Foley are your supervisors. Lisa's by herself today and Luann Goki, our administrative assistant. I will note that on our agenda at nine twenty Chuck Schraeger and Linda Bailey will not be coming. They will be in touch with us later. So first item on our agenda this morning is Todd Kenny. Morning, morning.
Morning. Um, so we have one. Utility permit. Um, toward the Coca Valley to remove overhead and install underground. Recommend approval.
Oh, motion this second to approve the utility permit to the Coca Valley Electric. All those in favor?
Aye.
On motion carry.
Okay, um. Maintenance and project work update. So the four hundred and seventy-fifth Avenue Bridge, the Patrick Labor Bridge, the seventy by thirty foot slab, that's complete. We're processing the final paperwork that's open. Um, so we just gotta do it. Go through our project closeout routine with the DOT. South Main Bridge obviously is complete. That's in the same status. We're at the. Process all our project closeout paperwork and that kind of thing through the DOT.
Talking about the South Main Bridge. Um, at our Historical Society Dinner on Sunday night, I had several people come up and ask me. Number one, if they were gonna put some reflectors up. Because when you're coming. Either way, it's it's really dark there. And it's hard to judge where you're at. And they just thought it would be really smart if we put reflectors or had. And we talked before about was there gonna be any lighting? And we said, no, there wasn't gonna be any lighting. But they said it would be very helpful if they put a few reflectors along both sides.
Yeah, so we've I talked to Mike, we're gonna get and we've ordered them. But uh, so on the bridge rail itself, I believe there's already reflectors there. But the rail that separates the bike lane. To the traveled way for the vehicular traffic, we're gonna put reflectors on those. So right now currently they don't have anything to think, you know, the rail that slopes up. So we're gonna put object markers on there. So you. It pins you, you know where the edges of the vehicular lanes are for for the bridge basically. So. That's, I believe that's been.
They'll probably be happy about that.
Yeah.
So what about doing some lighting on that? Because it is a walk trail.
I mean, we probably should have that conversation with the city.
I did have it with one of the city council members.
I mean, we went through this period four years ago and and put some lights up because it was dark. And now we put up a new bridge and we go through the lights. So it seems like that kind of got missed someone else.
Uh, is there lighting along the trail north and south of the bridge?
I don't think so.
So I guess I I mean, you have to, it's a bigger conversation because I it wouldn't make a lot of sense to put lights on the bridge and then have none of the rest of the trail. In my opinion.
For some reason, I thought the north side of that bridge, the trail on the north side was somehow in connected to this project somehow. I thought there was a.
Well, they're finishing that up now.
That's a separate grant. The one that's up by the intersecting street, that's separate from this project.
That's come across the park, camp ground there somewhere too and and somehow.
I'm not sure where it extends far. Are you talking about as it goes into the campground?
Well, as it comes from the north going south to the bridge, I I thought that was tied into this bridge project.
Well, they were looking about a a trail from the Y down to the bridge. Um, and then they were gonna do that. This, that would be city, but I haven't. I don't know where that is in the planning stages or in the construction stage.
So I was working with the. Design, the engineering firm on that, and I believe it's gonna come through the cemetery. Um, connect into Summit Street, come through the cemetery. We were looking into ownership and. What they needed to do to require, to get the required reasons.
For some reason, I just thought when we when we got the trail money for Bellevue, when this whole thing started years ago, that we were kind of the. Uh, getting paid or not getting paid, but we were the. Project, first project that got the trail money. I thought some of that was going toward that. Trail north of the bridge anyway, and then they were talking south.
Yeah.
But that section that's still yet to be paved, that's that's separate from our from the bridge project. That is a trans project.
Yeah, so I think that was DNR maybe even or, you know.
Well, we have the stoplights with the flashing red lights that are solar. Are there any? Like sidewalk lights that you could put out that would be solar? So you won't have to do. I mean, it sure make a lot easier to set them up.
Oh, I I don't know. Um, I'm there. I would. Possibly think there would be, but I don't know. If you're gonna use like trails money, I'm guessing there's a standard you would have to meet like, you know, as far as lumens and how how what it is and how it works, but. Um, if you're just gonna do it yourself, you probably could do something like that. But if you're gonna. Make an application for grant money, I'm assuming you have to meet their standards for lighting, so. Again.
So there's no power to the bridges, is there?
I would, no, I don't think so. So it'd have to be, you have to work the utility company and. Get some lighting put in. I I I think, like I said, it. I don't know, uh, I could reach out to the city, but I think this is a conversation for both the city and the county because. Um, the trail lighting would have, to me, would make sense to. Have this be a much bigger discussion other than the the bridge itself.
I would touch base with Josh or somebody over there. Yeah. Well, I'll mention it to Dan again to see if he's gonna talk to Josh about it, and then we can go to Josh also.
Uh, let's see here. Oh, we. Let's do the PCC patching work uh between Andrew and Sprigberg. Uh, that hopefully should be done by Thursday of this week. The three-day labor bridges, uh, FC twelve sixty-five on one hundred and seventy-fifth Street. They're gonna be stripping the deck today. Hopefully have it open by this Thursday or Monday, obviously Friday or not. Well. I shouldn't say they're not gonna work on Friday. Possibly will be, but. For our guys. We're gonna be uh, the work we have to do. To put the rail on stuff. If we're gonna get it done Thursday, it'll finish it on Monday. The uh. W twenty-eighty-eight Bridge on two hundred and sixteen Street. The piling's all driven, the straighter bridge. Uh, they're setting beams and they're they're possibly possibly pour the deck this Friday. So if they pour the deck this Friday, then we'll have office staff out there to do the air test, slope test and make beams from the deck.
So Friday?
Yeah.
Uh, along with that, you know, that two eighty-nine got ripped up again because of the rain, of course, so. We were using that for a cut across.
Your your buses?
Yeah.
Uh, so we don't have to do that too much longer, hopefully. Uh, the other day Labor Bridge Iowa zero two five two and five hundred and seventy-sixth Avenue. They're gonna close it this Wednesday and then start the demo, but that's on that. So it's a dead end, but it's a road that goes into the Level C that's gated. So we are, we have a runaround there because there's real no other way through there. Uh, so we have a runaround on that job, but that's gonna start closing. That's gonna get closed on Wednesday.
Where is that?
No, it's up north, Iowa.
Oh.
Five seven six thousand. Um. So then there's one other day labor project, the the S two is doing. It's a small bridge that's being removed in an eight-foot diameter corrugated metal pipe go back in. Um, that's supposedly gonna get done next week. That should be more than a day or two closure open. Um. The H B patching works that I, patching work that I talked about. That's all been done. Uh, there's a couple on the Cave Road, I think one on Hertzville. Seven Day or Seven Hills Road, and then we did a, we did a gravel road paint approach. Uh, bunch of different spots, but that's all done. Uh. Let's see. I think that's it for construction work. We got a safety committee meeting this Thursday. Uh. And then working with uh, Mike and Jayden. Started putting together our budget information, our costing information for day labor projects, because we're gonna try and, we already have three programs for fiscal year twenty-four. Looking to try and pick three more bridges to do in twenty-four, so we're gonna be doing six total. And then do the cost on that based on our square foot cost and decide whether we have to have a letting or we can do them just with a. Uh, basically day labor and I'd have to go to a letting. So hopefully we're gonna double up on our daily bridges for next year to get some of the. Some more of the contingency fund carryover balance spent down, so.
Good.
Uh. Any questions on that? I got one other thing to talk about. Go ahead. Okay. So the hauling work that the guys did for the Together We Build project. Uh, the MOU has us, the. The secondary road department, you know. Uh, I don't know what you call it earmarked to do like twenty-four hundred dollars worth of work per the agreement. For renting the space, the work space. So the work, there was fifty-one and a half hours with labor and equipment. So that comes to like fifty-three hundred bucks. So there's an additional twenty-nine hundred dollars. Who do I bill that to? So take off the twenty-four hundred, there's about twenty-nine hundred bucks. Who who pays that?
I thought it was in kind.
The twenty-four hundred dollars was in kind.
Well, we are neighbors and we're, you know, I mean, uh.
Yeah, it's it's constitutionally protected to be spent on roads. I get it. Is that a board paying that or does that go to the entity?
We're the ones that said they could do it, so I would say the board would have to pay that.
Is that something you guys have? Money for? Oh, you guys. Yeah.
Um, yes.
Or is it?
If it's the board's wishes, then we'll pay it. So go ahead and.
But I don't know if it's the entity that we're building, the building for should pay for, or I mean, they're the ones that got the benefit. I don't know.
Well, we have given twenty-four hundred dollars worth of benefit. I don't know if this is something that we need to. Talk to them about, or if this is, I mean, it's it's up to the board to decide.
Is that all they need or do, will there be more?
It's still a county building. Still a county entity.
This is true.
You know.
We will own it when it's done.
No, I, you know, I just thought. Yeah. That, you know.
I would make a motion to pay it.
It's the goodness, goodness of our heart.
As in kind or whatever.
So build the board.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Who is the entity that's building it?
It's the extension office and the fair.
And they're just gonna lease space from us? We'll own the building?
Or we will have title to the building. They will have the management and the upkeep of the building.
Gotcha. Okay. Perfect. Okay, that's all I have.
Yeah.
And I won't forget this. I'll leave this for you. They didn't put the tabs on it though.
Okay, I I'll try to find them.
You're a. You're kind of a short timer, right?
Thank you for reminding.
I kind of forget. I always thought you'd be around forever, Jack.
Some people, some people think I have been.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, do we have any visitor citizens that wish to address the board? If not. Lisa, do you wanna do your?
Certainly can. So this morning I need a motion to approve the business in November first, twenty twenty-two board proceedings as written by auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspaper.
I move. Then moved and seconded to approve the publication of our previous board meeting minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing. In the amount of nine hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-two cents.
Motion to approve. That is one of the big ones.
Check it. You gonna have any comments on that?
Well, I I just noticed six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents is towards the jail. So.
So that means we have some action going on. Yes, so that's a good thing. We see some movement. We see some progress. So that's.
Are they working this week? I haven't.
They were down there this morning. I was a, I think it was a plumber truck maybe.
I was in yesterday and they got the lights on and the garage doors are working.
Oh, it's a good thing.
Yeah, I started just down there doing electrical and um. Get rid of door company was there working on the openers and stuff.
Also note there was well over two hundred thousand in road repairs. Right. And we had four autopsies that we had to pay for.
And you had over a hundred thousand dollars to support the libraries in Jackson County. So you know what? It's all good things. Unfortunately, we had some bad things, but um. So yes, that's a very, we did have, we did have to amend the budget because of that. There are.
In fact, before we started and Larry, Mike and I were already says. Couldn't we maybe put off those line repayments? We don't have a nine hundred thousand dollar.
Yeah.
I'll do that every two weeks.
Okay.
So then I need a motion to approve a handwritten warrant.
We, we don't know about that. We haven't voted yet.
Oh, sorry.
All those in favor? I, motion carry.
Sorry about that. Motion needed to approve a handwritten warrant to the United States Post Office for seven hundred dollars for the auditor's office business reply account for absentee ballot postage.
I move. Motion second for the postage. All those in favor?
Aye.
I, motion carry.
Motion needed to accept place on file and authorize the chair signature on the county recorder's report of fees collected. For the month of October twenty twenty-two in the amount of forty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-three cents.
Motion to approve.
I would second.
A motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
I, motion carry.
Motion needed to approve a class C native wine permit with outdoor service and Sunday sales to Iowa Grapevines Winery LLC at eighteen three forty-five fifty-fifth Street, Macocana. Effective November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two through November. Fourteen, so it's through November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two through November fourteen, twenty twenty-three.
That was nice.
Yeah.
Uh. Move to approve. Second with that change.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, but I think I caught it this morning because look at I I I looked at this, the um, the policy effective date is November fifteen, twenty twenty-two through. It says even on the state website, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. The state website says that. Here's the tentative. Okay, so, oh, that's for the insurance. Um, the tentative effective date is November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. I probably got a little fast with my typing last night. Um.
Perfect.
Yeah. All right. I also need a motion to approve invoices for two thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars to Rick Weiner AIA. Fourteen thousand and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents to Midwest Construction Consultants, Inc. And five hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-six cents to Bill Bruce Builders. For a total cost of five hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and eighteen cents. And authorize the chair signature on the project cost recap for the law enforcement center for the month of November twenty twenty-two.
A move.
Yeah, second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carrying.
I also need a motion to approve invoices for four thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars to SA Architects. Three thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-two cents to Midwest Construction Consultants, Inc. A hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars to Peak Construction. Ten thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty cents to Hometown Plumbing and Heating. Forty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and forty-six cents to Stickley Electric. And seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy-seven cents to Bellevue Sand and Gravel for a total cost of two hundred and fourteen thousand, thirty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. And authorize chair signature on the project cost recap for the Jackson County Fair and the ISU Extension for Outreach Center.
Motion to approve. I would second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Right, yeah.
Just as a reminder, um, today is election day, so I encourage everyone to get out and vote. Um, from what I have seen so far this morning, it looks like uh, our election officials are are busy. So that's a good thing, but I encourage everyone to get out and have your voice heard today. Um, the last thing that I would like to bring forward, um. And maybe you drove by the courthouse last night. Um. But anyway, Jackson County is one of three thousand and sixty-nine counties in the United States. That we are participating with the Operation Green Light for Veterans. So there's a light over at the Penrose Building. We have lit the north side and some of the east side of the courthouse. And that is to honor those veterans that have served and those that have given the ultimate sacrifice. So we are participating. And uh, that's why we have green lights on at the courthouse.
Wonderful.
Absolutely, we do. Pay respect to those people that have served. Um, other than that, I have nothing else for the board. How long will the green light be this week? Yep, this week.
Okay, Luann, do you wanna come forward? This time we'll be joined by Luann Goki, our executive assistant. Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Did you get sure this morning, get Lisa back out of here?
Thanks, Luann.
Yeah. All right, all I have is the calendar for this week. Uh, four P M. This afternoon is the McCook and River Watershed Management Authority Executive Committee meeting by Zoom for Larry. Tomorrow, November ninth at nine A M. Um, on K M Q's just talked, it's Mike's turn. Do that. Um, ten A M. Tomorrow is also the I cap. Up-level planning and zoning commission workshop by Zoom for any of you that want to do that. Thursday, November tenth at ten A M. Is an Iowa DHS Council meeting in Des Moines for Jack. And eleven thirty that day is a Jackson County Area Tourism Association meeting by Zoom and Mike usually attends those meetings. On Friday, November eleventh, it will be Veterans Day. The courthouse will be closed in honor of Veterans Day. We'll reopen on Monday, November fourteenth. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, November fifteenth at nine A M. And there are four meetings that day at six P M. Is the Jackson County Economic Alliance meeting for Jack. At six P M. Also is probably tentatively a conservation board meeting in Hersfield for Larry. At six thirty is a historic preservation committee meeting. That's also tentative at this point. And then at seven o'clock is a Jackson County Board of Health meeting in the community room.
And Thursday, the tenth, while I'm in Des Moines, after the DHS council meeting is over, I will be going to statewide. Um, E C I meeting. It's also in Des Moines.
The early childhood meeting. Yep, yep.
Okay. What's do I have a level plan in terms?
It's for, well, that's the insurance company, but they're they're providing a webinar on zoning and planning. So it's it's, um, there's a link in your calendar for that. It's in the email out again too, so you can read it, right?
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, this time we'll be joined by Elizabeth Fountain, our partner's. Director. Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, so today I have for you a. New proposed resolution. That would be replacing an existing resolution that we have. Um. Pertaining to the construction of the dresser subdivision water system. So in two thousand, March of two thousand and eighteen. Um. Resolution six three two zero three two seven two zero one eight was passed. Um. Basically saying that there are only five properties in the dresser subdivision. That would pass any type of transfer. Um, inspection and that. The Board of Health did not want any wells to remain after the dresser subdivision received the city water. Um, from Bellevue. So since that time, we've been, um, you know, the grant was approved for the water. Um, they're working on getting easement agreements signed. Um, we've had a few property owners come forward and say, hey, we want to keep our private well. So we went through the process of making sure that they need the setback requirements um, for the state. Um, they paid for inspections to be done on their private. Septic systems to make sure that everything is good. Um, so on November first, I took this to the Board of Health for review of the new proposed resolution. It would allow. Those four properties to keep their private well as long as they continue to need the setback requirements. So if anything were changed in future, um, they would still have to meet that requirement. So if the state makes any changes, they have to meet that. Um, but it would, and it wouldn't. So the one thing that they don't, the Board of Health didn't want in here originally was the grandfathering in. Um, so we removed that, made some changes, and I did have Sarah. Our county attorney review this to make sure it was good, so.
So I think the original. Resolution was in part with the city when the city was in. Going to put the water up there and they had the grant money. And then it would also include an allocation which wasn't. Acceptable to either party. So it was either all or none at that time, and. I I don't think there's an issue with these four wells, like you said, as long as they're compliant. You know, in in the future, if they're not compliant, they, it's at their expense that they need to hook up to the new system.
Right, and there was, they had asked, you know, can can we drill a new well in the future if? Let's say there is runs dry, which I've only seen one well run dry in the county since I've been here. So I don't think that's very common to happen. Um, but they wanted to know if they can drill another one, and the Board of Health said, yes, if. They meet that setback requirement and they're still in compliance with what the state. You know, the county wants to be.
Correct.
Just for health reasons, so.
Do you have a number for this resolution?
I do have a resolution. It is resolution number nine twenty-seven dash eleven dash zero eight dash twenty twenty-two.
I would make a motion to pass that resolution as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second to pass resolution as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
I, motion carry. Thank you.
Julie, bring that over. Yep.
Okay, it looks like we have a visitor and citizen here. John, do you wanna come up?
Yeah, just uh. Stop and see if you had any questions to give a little update or grab. Hopefully plumbers gonna be out there today, so inserting some of the underground plumbing in. Wanna get that in, uh. They're gonna be back yet this week, start bench openings over there. Uh. The. Craig's pretty well done with electrical over there. He's got a few more things to hook up, and they're gonna bring a trencher in. And uh, hook the temporary power that we got set up to the building. So we'll have kind of permanent power there anyways. Instead of running the generator or whatever over there. Uh, they brought out a propane tank, dropped that off, and uh, right now it's empty, but uh. Move it around where we need it, and then I think that they're bringing the heater. Furnace in sometime this week, and we'll just let it run wild for time being and. Till they get out.
Run wild.
Yeah, till they get over there. Uh. We are gonna hook that building up to the. Emergency generator to uh, to the new building when that happens. So beyond uh, emergency power also out there.
Okay.
For you. Uh, I have to get ahold of Joel. Uh, when they started plumbers out there bringing that main into the building. Joel would maybe wanna get out there and hook up your uh. Plumbing to that building. You have, I believe plumbing stubbed out of the building for the toilet and stuff out there. So I just want to coordinate if it's opened up, Joel might as well get over there, get it hooked up.
Absolutely.
So that uh, that's taken care of for you. Uh.
Will that run to the? The jail itself?
No, it'll run into the main, so Jim.
Okay.
The mains coming in.
That main is already, right?
Yeah, I mean. I've got it with that, and I did touch Steve Plaki and uh. So I'm not sure when he's getting over there. But I would like, I need to take a look at drains coming out that exist, but. Originally, I used drain under the property.
Mm-hmm.
And if we're taking some of that dirt out of ways, build that up. Undo the drains that are running onto our property. Think there's two of them. And just let them surface drain into the new swale we're putting in there. So that it's not coming under where.
Or underground drains there?
Yeah.
About eight inch tubes, I think, something like that.
Yeah, there's eight inch, appears the ones on the south side, maybe the only ones hooked up to it. There's also a. A tube coming out there on the north side, right? As you come up to that parking lot. As you come up to that parking lot. When you turn in the parking lot, there's one there. I took a look at him another day, but. Uh, I wouldn't see a problem with them surface draining. I imagine back in the day, you know, they didn't care if it drained down on that because they. Were just using it for a lay down area. Uh, back there, so. Uh, just want to get that.
Come by this morning, I think, I think it was a plumber van that was sitting there. I'm not really sure.
Uh, it's probably Craig Steinis. Cause I was, I was there. For the plumber, I called him this morning, because. You get them in there, get them going. I mean, they should have been in there a while ago, in my opinion. You know, sleeving and stuff, so I want to make sure that they're getting stuff compacted under the puddings. Uh, when they put that plumbing in. And uh did change some plumbing. Uh, there is six inch coming up the holding cells, six inch B D C. And uh I didn't feel there's going to be enough water. You know, that keep that long, and so I switched them back to four inch and I checked with the air. He said, yeah, that'd probably be a better situation, you know, with the amount of water coming through there, and then they. Dump in the six inch rain and then go up. I did watch out for him and dug some footings out so he can get his plumbing in without chipping them out, but uh. They have to get down there and get going. And then electrician can go. So the plan is to get the. The puddings in, and then they're going to belt the rock in, which will then allow electrician to get all this stuff in. So that we'd be ready to go, you know, and I'm trying to push precast as much as I can. There is a four by four sample out there, but I think you gentlemen. Saw the sample that we had done out there, and it looks good, so.
Yes, it does.
So what's, when does the steel frame go up?
After the precast.
After the precast?
Well, you can put some of it up, but uh, you know.
So if they put the rock and the plumbing in, does the floor get bored? Not till.
Not till the precast is in. So somehow the main interior puddings that are only uh. Two foot deep, they're foot down, eight inches down, and then foot, foot half deep. Man, cover them with some kind of straw or something temporarily.
So there's a, if you go. Where's that deck? Um, like where the jail site is, if you go straight east on that road.
West, yeah.
No, straight east. And it goes into a driveway, and then you go around the building. They got a second. Industrial warehouse sale thing there. They have styrofoam, four by sheets of styrofoam, five bucks a sheet.
Yeah.
You know, if you want to get something like that to cover it.
Not sure how we'd hold it down.
Yeah, throw dirt on it or something, but. Would straw work good enough?
I think so, yeah. Really, just try and protect them, and and if I could wrap the straw bales in plastic. Say put plastic.
Oh, we're going to put bales on top.
And then wrap the bales in plastic. Then when we're done with the bales, they could re- really reuse them, you know.
Okay, for the ceiling.
Yeah, or whatever they want to do.
Is, is Clocky going to start the slope of that hillside there too, or?
I gotta talk to him. I gotta meet with him and Alex out there. He he's concerned about some of the grades there on the east side. He wants more grading, you know. I said, well, you could put the permite to her, but you know, Clocky. He said, I didn't buy a hundred thousand dollar laser for this bulldozer to put the permite to her, but uh. Anyways, I'm going to meet with Alex out there, just make sure we get the grades the way we want them. Because we're trying to drain everything from that east slope out that west drive. And that's a long ways to go with water.
You're going north and then west.
Yeah, so, yeah, and it just. So going putting that swale and we can just take half of that building. Drain it towards the east and then drain it down the side in that swell and then get it out that way, and it'd probably be more effective and. And uh drain better anyways, so I just want to make sure Alex has a. Handle on what we need out there, so I told Clocky, we'd meet him, Mitch and uh. And Alex out there, and we just uh. You know, get it so that they have a comfort level and we have comfort level.
So and Clocky does that slope, that he cut away that he wasn't supposed to. How are you going to make contact that soil so that it's going to be secure?
Uh, that was supposed to cut out because that was supposed to be retaining wall.
Yeah, but we, we removed that when we were doing it. It was going to just be a. Us, we were going to leave the slope that was there.
And there, that hasn't been cut in yet. So that goes thirty foot. Further. And that cuts down gradually. So that soil won't be disturbed as much.
Good, that's good.
So, I mean, they'll have to compact it in there and uh. You know, we're going to have to seed it first thing in the spring. I'd rather not put rock in there. Uh, if I, if I don't have to, you know, to hold the grade.
Sure.
Uh, if if anything, I'd rather sodding thing and call her good, you know. Uh, it should be a mobile slope, but when we get it cut, we're going to know better what we got. And uh get Marty out there and say, okay, this is what you got, you know, what do you feel comfortable with? And go that direction.
Okay. Say conservation as a drill that you can drill in.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Uh. I mean, you're almost going to have to put down like a rye, something that take off immediately, and then some. Bluegrass or something after that, that would come in slowly after that, but uh. You know, if you get some heavy rains.
If you mat that though, that'll come.
Yeah.
Within days.
Yeah. Yeah, you can put that man. Stay it down. Any other questions on what we have going on out there?
No, we see some, we see some invoices in our.
Some progress anyway.
Oh, it's just mine.
I see it. No, it's just money.
Now, uh. I I would expect the invoices to slow down, so we skirt things in precast.
Right.
You know, at this point in time, I mean. It'd be nice if we get that earlier in December when we're anticipating it. So that uh we get that set up and then uh.
Well, even them footage, that interior footage, you know, I mean, if you get them in now, I mean, we still got decent weather and hopefully got decent weather. Through December where that frost won't go down.
Yeah.
You know, if you get the rock in there, you can get it covered, something like that's.
Uh, did everybody's panicking because the next week's supposed to be down fifteens and stuff, but that I. That ground's still warm enough that it's not going to, you know, make it help.
It's done.
Different, but.
Yeah.
Sooner or later, I know I poured it up to January twenty third, we poured in our shirt sleeves in two thousand and. It was sixty five degrees out, but the next day it was done. So when it turns, it really turns, so. But uh I'm not concerned about, like, as you said, the material footage right away and uh. And I'm just hoping somebody else screws up so we get our precast drill. I mean, I thought they're pouring right after they finished paying Walter, but they had a couple smaller jobs. They're telling me they can't find any help. I don't know where all the dang help is these days, but. I hear that all the time. I think they're just trying to break us in in longer lead times. That's what we're going to have to live with the rest of this time. Oh, the overhead door guys did get out there too, the. I didn't feel, I thought we were going to burn them motors up if we ever used to mind them overhead doors. Cause they didn't have tensioning correct on the tension cables. I mean, every time I try to put it up, it's like a wrestling match, and it should go up easier than that.
Right.
So they came out and retention them also. Marty got a hold of them. Everything's coming together pretty good. If we can just keep the material coming, keep them going.
That's all.
Uh, I just keep yelling. I mean. To try and get it.
Somebody's got to do it.
Yeah, get that vein standing up in your head, and sometimes they'll listen to you, but uh. Okay, uh, that's all I have. Pretty sure. So you got anything?
I just only have a question. Do you have the project cost recap for the Together We Go? Oh, I can.
I do.
Okay.
And I left the office, and I would say Lisa's putting it in the mail today.
That's fine. Um, because I got it approved today. I just need to make sure that I get something to be.
Yeah, I did email it to Dean, although also to, is it Brian?
Uh, no.
Yeah, right. So he could probably go ahead and pay.
That's fine. Yeah, that's right. I've got that all taken care of today and um. So we can move forward with that. Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, they're wanting to get those footings, the same company that's doing our footings is doing those, so they're trying to get them in. I know that they're looking for the can drawings for it, so hopefully those footings are going in. Those guys finish those geopiers after that fiasco, trying to get them there, uh. Like in three and a half hours, they drove fifty eight of them and. Packed them in, so.
Okay.
Anyways, I'll let you go. You guys have a great day, uh. You'll be busy.
Thanks, John. Look me talking to you.
Thank you.
God, do you have something for us?
Yeah, I forgot I was going to. Mention this to you. I don't know if you remember, but uh. Uh, while back, I said we were going to go out and measure the aggregate thickness of the roads. Uh. So Randy's got that information. He got it back to me. Uh, put it into the spreadsheet so we can start tracking that year to year. Uh, so this is the the map. I don't think you see, but the. Twelve sites, a little yellow dots, so it's kind of spread out all over the county, and I tried to pick some middle to higher A D T routes. Of the twelve roads, the average A D T was eighty seven vehicles a day, so from a low of like forty five to a. A high of a hundred and fifty vehicles per day, so. So we take a hole in each lane, and then we average the thickness. So what's the average thickness?
Three.
Three?
Um, two and a half.
Two point nine, so very close, so um. Actually, I was surprised. I thought it would be less than that as well. Um, the issue being. There's three sections of road that really throws the reading off. The three, three roads. One had six inches, one had seven point five, and the other one had five. So then you have one, two, three, four different sections with an inch and a half or less. So. Why do I collect the data? One is just to see if we're gaining or losing ground year to year. And then the other thing is, is to maybe tweak how we apply rock. So if we have areas of the county that are either because of soil types, rock abrasion, which is its hardness basically. Or A D T, like uh, you know, confinement, something that really chews through the rock. We, maybe we don't just. Put the same amount of tons in every district because there's some districts that don't need it versus other districts that got a. A higher need for rock. So anyway, that's the. That was the information I want to share with you, so we'll be using this, tracking this and using it for. You know, budgeting, but also kind of how we apply rock. Like, it doesn't make sense how we're doing it, basically.
Is that something that can be emailed that we can look at, looking at the roads where they are and do the infrastructure?
Yeah.
Sounds great.
No, no problem. Okay, I'm going to wait. Uh, Jayden's going to make me a fancier map. This is just one that I gave to Randy and then scanned in, so. So when he gets that done, I'll I'll probably. I'll send you this right away, but the map, uh, you know what, I'll send you both, and then when I get to do that, you can ask me that.
Yeah, I mean, are there, are the other graphs there that you have, are the road numbers on there too?
Are there? Yeah, so the, it it says like, uh, so regiment location, South Gary Owen Road, north of two hundred and thirty fourth street, but you, they're numbered. So you can reference the number to them in a part of that.
Thank you. Thank you. Don't forget to vote. Okay, if there are any other business to come, we're meeting today.
Just an update, you probably read the minutes for the nine one one meeting, so we got. We were, of course, backlogging some of the equipment, although we do have some of the equipment. Um, we do not have the repeaters for the cars. Um, and then we also have an issue with um installation.
I heard that.
So Kamala is kind of. Well, they're, they're saying Motorola is not paying enough to install them, so. This is Motorola's baby. It was contracted that they get it installed, so they're working with another. outfit that they worked before, and there was a conference call on after our meeting, so um I did get some reports back from that, but. Working on it, so it's work in progress also, also waiting on supply. Chain issues, so. Hopefully we can keep moving forward. Be nice to have it in in use. I mean, we're, we're having special meetings now, maybe two this, see how we can fund the nine one one fund, the radio, rest of the radios for. Fire and EMS channel. Anyway, just a short report.
So I mean, all of them, three of us know this from our R T A meeting, but the buses we had ordered at ninety two thousand dollars apiece. They've increased the price to a hundred and seventy three thousand. So much dump, and we have eight that we need to replace. And that's, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm going to order three. I mean, we need them, um.
Oh.
But, yeah, it's crazy.
Yeah. Yeah, they can't make that money up too fast.
That's for darn sure.
Yeah.
The other thing, um, Luanne, did you?
Sorry.
Did you contact any I three A yet about um the director coming down to visit with us?
I talked to. Stacy Spears. She said Janet Bowles is in charge. And I have not heard back from Janet. Maybe can, I can send her some dates and try it again, but.
Yeah. You know, as, as we indicated from the. From the contract we have with any I three A operating our. Facility, um. There's a lot of things that they are not doing that we would like to find out. From them, what their plans for the future are, so.
Well, if it's in the contract, yeah, that they're supposed to be excellent on things that. It's patient and.
Well, we know it's not happening, so.
Careful.
Anyway, yeah. Continue to work to try to get them down here. Uh, there's nothing else.
Thank you, motion to adjourn. I would second.
And remind everybody, if they're watching.
Go and vote.
Vote.
All those in favor?
All right.
I, motion carried.